Allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote. Anthony Morante.
Here.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Mary Almender.
Here.
David Harden.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Neil Tillman.
Here.
We have minutes from July 21st, 2016 meeting. Any corrections, additions, deletions? No one? Move to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ah, an old familiar one.
I have one question about this, though. Yes, sir.
I felt we had gotten something from them saying, "The Board of Health," I thought, which is what we were waiting on for so long.
Yes.
And I went back and read the minutes, they had sent an approval.
They sent the approval, we're waiting for them to sign off on the plat. That's the only thing outstanding at which...
Okay.
Which case it'll come back to you.
Wasn't there an issue over water?
Excuse me?
Wasn't there an issue over water, DOH approval for the distance between the septic and the well?
Not currently, that I'm aware of.
No?
No. My understanding is the plat was submitted for final approval to the Ward in Putnam County at the end of August, and for their signature, and then back to here.
Well, there was an issue on the... The Board's approval that goes back several years required them to obtain Department of Health approval.
Right.
For the sanitary sewer system.
That's what we kept extending.
That's been the hang-up from the applicant's perspective. Within the last few months, they've submitted documentation that Department of Health has approved that sanitary design, which I think would address the concern that DOH must have had over separation distances between the well and septic.
Right.
That's correct.
That document's been produced, it's in your records. We had made some final review of the plat to assure it satisfied conditions of approval, and the only significant item was to get all endorsements on that plat, and that's what the applicant's representative is discussing. So Department of Health has to sign off on that plan, the owner signs, and then it's presented for the planning board chairman's endorsement.
That's correct.
Was some of this caused by the change in the planner for the county? Luke, you know?
Nobody's given us a reason for the delay. I mean, I know that over the past couple of months, they have really been on top of it, but we've never really received a...
So why are you here?
So I'm here for additional extension, and hopefully a final extension, to allow for the signatures, and to submit the plat for your review.
Okay. Any further comment, Ron?
No, as the applicant indicates, the plat is now ready for endorsement upon its presentation to you with necessary signatures. He's still lacking those signatures, and so he needs this extension apparently, so that he can then present that document to you.
You expect to have it by next month?
I...
You hope to have it by next month?
I hope to have it by next month.
I'll entertain a motion to grant the extension. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hudson Highland Reserve Route 9, Horton Road, consideration of findings from the meeting last night, 14th. Ron, brief summary?
Sure. As the Board's aware, the... I think back in July, the Board had conditionally approved the latest revised conservation analysis, and the Board had directed us to prepare an outline of what would be contained within a conservation findings, which would be the next step in the process after accepting that analysis. That was... That involved some fairly lengthy discussion at last night's work session to explain the purpose of the outline and the details of the outline. I think the Board was reasonably assured as to the reason for the extent of detail, and tonight the intent would be to formally authorize your consultants to prepare a findings in accordance with the outline that was discussed last night.
Anybody have any questions for Ron or Steve? Ariel?
Just one clarification. When the applicant originally came to us, they had presented a draft plan that showed approximately, I don't have that, I thought I had that here, approximately 28 houses staggered all over the property, and my understanding is with these findings, we will decide whether or not we go to a subdivision, a conservation subdivision, based on the final conservation analysis that shows the restrained areas?
Yeah. The purpose of the conservation findings is for the Board to, again, present their findings as to all the data that was presented in that conservation analysis. If you identify those areas of medium and high conservation value that you want to see protected, and you endorse the applicant's concept, in terms of the detail that he's provided, you can, as part of this findings, you can authorize him to move forward with the conservation subdivision plat. And that will later get into the issue with density. This doesn't specifically address density.
Okay, I just wondered that.
Right.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I entertain a motion to direct our consultants to prepare the statement of findings. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, may I ask if we might be able to get the draft of that maybe a week before? If we might be able to get the draft of the findings perhaps a week before the meeting, so that we can have a chance to review it before your meeting? I know that you'll be discussing it in October. Frankly, we lost a fair amount of time in that we... At least our perception was that the workshop would be to flesh out the set of findings, and that really didn't happen. But we would like to get this, move it forward a little bit. We've been working on it an awful long time, and if we had a week, if we had the drafts a week ahead of time, it would give us a chance to react and perhaps make some suggestions or objections, but I think it would help us out a lot.
Well, if Ron and Susan feel that they can get it done ahead of time, because we had talked last night about a possible workshop.
Correct.
Prior to presenting it to them at a regular meeting.
Correct. Again, it's uncertain exactly as to when the draft will come out. We'll do our best to get it out, certainly in advance of your next meeting. I can't be assured, because there is a fair bit of interplay between the two offices to get to a point where we're both satisfied.
Glenn, that's all I can say is that if we get it in time, we will do it.
I guess the question that I would have, I think, a corollary, what Glenn is asking is, would I be authorized to release it to the applicant at the same time I release it to the Board, or should I only send it to the Board for your initial review?
So I have a question about that, which is, you know, if... I'm not sure that I... I'm... I would want to be presented with, you know, we want to look at the findings, we want to talk about them. I'm not sure that I want to be presented with potential rebuttals to the findings before we've had an opportunity to talk about them.
That's something...
And since we can't talk about them except in a public forum, you know, it's just, it's difficult. You know, I don't know how everybody else feels.
Well, I would think that's the purpose of the workshop, is to, for us to discuss it with Ron and Susan, and get our input before we present it to the applicant. If that's possible, and the timeframe, we're talking about a month from now, and then if we feel, I would, I'm just assuming, you know, saying it now, if we felt comfortable with the result of that meeting, then possibly give it to the applicant.
Would they ever be able to see what we talked about anyway?
Well, yeah, because it will be an open meeting, it'll be a workshop.
Neil raises his hand.
Neil.
Ron, the primary input for your findings document is what?
We're going to summarize the contents of that very large conservation analysis.
You just don't buy the applicant.
Right.
Right, so I mean, it's a... I'm just balancing the idea, it's not you're doing third-party research.
Nope, not at all.
You're using their material to an assessment of their material, for then our consumption to evaluate your assessment of their material. So I could go either way on whether they see it ahead of time or not, because it's, again, it's from their material in some ways, is the source.
That's three-quarters of it, I would say, but the findings isn't just a summary of what's in the analysis that's been done. The conservation findings statement is going to be conclusions drawn from the information that was provided. Now, Ron can help with engineering analysis, but you're really going to need AKRF to say, "We've looked at it, and it's these steep slopes that you really want to preserve, it's this old road, or at least this portion of it that needs to be..."
And if we do that in the workshop, the public doesn't speak in the workshop typically, right?
No, they're going to take public input.
So we could...
Right. What I'd suggest is that as they feel is appropriate, Ron and Susan might want to communicate with them if they have any questions, if there's a particular issue that they want to flesh out, but the conclusions should, of course, be their own, and then it's up to this Board to decide whether they accept their consultant's conclusions, or if, gee, I've thought of something else, have you looked at it this way? I prefer that to be, you know, over in that area rather than this area. You have the final say as to what the findings statement's going to be. But I think on a line of communication's a good idea, rather than actually requiring that the draft be shared.
Okay. Anybody else on that addition? Okay, I think we still have a motion to direct our consultants to go ahead, take a vote?
You've got the motion, right?
Yeah.
Now we have to vote.
Neil, second. Aye. Okay. You are now directed.
It was more like a wave.
It's not. Wasn't the first time, Neil. All right. Phillips Town Square, amended site plan for change in use of the most southerly retail space, restaurant, to be expanded to the second floor to an event space, which would include expansion for parking. We also have a report from Ron here, a two-page report, two and a half page.
Hi. How are you? Jamie from Larry Pajee's office, representing the applicant. We're just here to review the existing use for the restaurant in the southern part of the retail plaza. They're going to expand upstairs to have an event room. They already have their Health Department approval for the flow for this additional area, and nothing is changing on the plan. They have the required parking already on-site for the use, so we're just here to see what we need to do from you.
Just to find the specifics of the expansion, is it the entire second floor over the...
Yeah, the existing restaurant is here, it's a 38-seat restaurant, so they're going to have an event space upstairs, which will hold, it's approved for 45 seats, it's like 960 square feet or so. So they're going to use that whole space for the events, for any events, party room kind of thing. But they have all the parking already on-site to handle that additional use, which wouldn't be a daily use, it would be an occasional use, honestly.
What was the upstairs space before?
It was just a storage area.
And there was no restaurant space up on the second floor?
No, but when they got their approval back in March of 2011, it was for this southerly space, so I don't know if it was defined about the second floor, I wasn't involved in it.
I have a question about that, because it seems to me, I thought I remember, unless it was changed in 2011, I thought there was supposed to be no use of the second level along the whole development.
On the whole, on this whole side?
The whole structure, from south to north.
Other than what existed with Dr. Gail's...
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I wasn't involved with the project when they came in for the facelift and connecting the building, so I'm not sure that the second floor space wasn't supposed to be used.
This has been back and forth to us numerous times over the last even seven or eight years, so I'm just wondering when the change was made. I don't know if we have a record of it, or it should be a record somewhere, but...
Well, again, I think as Jamie indicates, in 2011, you know, the connection of the buildings and the activity was approved, and it was likewise my understanding that there was going to be no commercial use on the second floor, other than possible storage. So this represents a change in use by expanding that restaurant use, which is permitted, into that second floor.
Because we, Pat Sexton was on the Board, and she would always ask about handicap and ADA compliance, and so there would have been a fire issue with going up to the second floor and access. Am I... I'm sorry. So I remember that there was specifically no use on the second floor for anything commercial. There was another question that I had, but now it's escaping me, and parking.
Is there really sufficient parking for this additional space?
Right. And also, you know, just one more thing, that, you know, this was an existing building, which, an existing set of buildings, where the septic, you know, it's a much heavier use than it was in 2011. You know, it's great, you know, that they've been successful, and there are a lot of things there, but the septic system is, you know, predates this growth, so I'm just, I'm interested in seeing, you know, the Board of Health approval of that, and what they, you know, what they think the load is and that kind of thing.
We have it, and I have the documentation for the calculations for the design flow, and what it was based on, so that you can see that.
Because I think it was just repaired, it wasn't, you know, it's not new.
If, I mean, if the size of it maintained the flow for what was proposed in the retail, I mean, the Health Department wouldn't allow John to continue to use it, so...
Yeah, I know, I just want to make sure we're, you know, because it's a bigger, a bigger number of people.
Okay.
You know, if you have all 45 people there and the restaurant's full, you know, is the septic system going to be able to handle that? Because that's more than has been at any given time in this building.
I believe originally he had approval for a greater number of, a greater number of people, right?
We have an approval for 115 seats in the plaza, currently with 88, so we're adding 45 seats upstairs, but still about 232.
So basically, the Health Department approval was for 115 seats for the plaza. It was over, close to 5,000 gallons a day. Currently, we're using 1,400 gallons a day, so we're well below what's allowed. As far as the septic, we did upgrade the septic, we added an entire septic, new septic to the front of the plaza. So as far as the Health Department goes, we forwarded the letters, I believe, it's approved on their end. That's basically, you know, regarding the Health Department. Parking, there is sufficient parking as well, I think we have one additional spot than what's required currently, so we wouldn't even have to provide additional parking.
I wasn't aware that you'd upgraded the, I wasn't aware that you'd upgraded the septic, because it was originally a repair.
The whole front of the parking lot was, is septic.
Have you gotten any feedback from the code enforcement officer as to the conversion from a storage space to an assembly space, as far as emergency egress, fire escapes, anything like that? Have they given you anything to work with?
We already have a plan into the Building Department. They basically said that you should ask the Planning Department, Planning Board, if there's anything required for an amended site plan, additional parking, so they wanted to clear their end of it. They're okay with the architectural drawings and egress and handicap accessibility, the stairs to the upstairs arc, handicap accessible, there's no elevator, but they meet all codes on that respect. So Building Department is okay with the drawings and plans, they referred it to you, you know, I guess is, I'm not sure.
Well, then, the first, second paragraph of Ron Gaynor's report says that you're requesting a waiver of the site plan. Can we get clarification on that?
Again, I had raised that, it's in the applicant's correspondence to the Board. I discussed it in my technical memorandum, too, and I've also given Steve a heads-up just to be prepared to discuss that issue tonight, to understand if the Board has any latitude in that regard, or whether it should be processed as an amended site plan it would otherwise be.
All right. If site plan approval is required, the Board has no authority to waive site plan approval. You can't forgive it if the code says that it's required, it's required, you can grant it, but you cannot waive it. There is a doctrine called the field change, and a field change is a very minor alteration to an approved plan that doesn't change any significant aspect of it. For example, you have a site plan that shows your advertising sign six feet away from the roadway. It's within the required setback, no problems. You go in, you start to dig for it, you find there's a rock outcrop there, so you want to put it 10 feet back from the roadway now, so that you can put it in without bringing a rock hammer or anything like that. You go to the building inspector, and the building inspector can say, "That's no big deal, you don't need to go for approval of that, it's a field change." If he has trepidation about doing that, he can send you to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board can recognize it as a field change. And if that's the case, you don't have to go through approval. The existing plan stands, if he ever comes in for amended, he would submit what's called an as-built, and you'd show, "Well, it's a little bit off from what's there, but it's no big to do." This is not a field change, this is a change in use. This requires an amendment, approval for the amendment, obviously you're not changing the drawing itself as far as that goes. What your code does provide is that when you have an existing approved site plan, and there's an amendment that doesn't require a substantial change to the drawing itself, that you can approve it without requiring a, in fact, you should approve it without requiring a public hearing. So if you didn't have any questions, there was nothing more to bring up, on another application that wasn't on a state roadway, you could approve it tonight, but it is on a state roadway, and it is amended site plan approval, even though the site plan's drawings are not being changed. So under General Municipal Law 239M, you have to send it to County Planning, who I'm sure is going to say it's a local determination, but that's what the law says, you really don't have a choice in that. And you have to go through secret review, which, again, there's no, I mean, assuming that the septic checks out, I can't imagine there's any possibility for, so you'll adopt a negative declaration and an approval probably next month. I mean, and if you have some questions and things you want, you know, cleared up between now and then, whether it's a letter from the Building Department saying they have no problem with ingress or egress, information on the septic, maybe you want to go back and check the 2011 approval. My recollection is that they just said it wasn't going to be, there wasn't going to be any on the second floor. I don't think it was made a condition of the approval that there not be anything. I could be wrong, though, this is five years ago, so...
That's probably you.
But you may want to pull that and take a look. Even if they made it a condition that they couldn't use it, you'd still be free to relieve them of the condition upon a proper showing, so, you know, but if you want to have those things in place for next month, refer it and approve it next month, that's, you know, that's what I would recommend.
So we do need to send it to County Planning, and then...
You need to declare yourself lead agency, you know, you're the only involved agency, so that's no big deal, and, you know, adopt two resolutions, direct that they be prepared if you like.
Any further questions?
I do have one. Event, event, what's the language?
Event room.
Event room. That sounds like, that sounds like a material difference from a restaurant in terms of the volume of human beings, and so I don't know what that, I was trying to see, I don't see, I don't see that term defined in our glossary, so I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means a density of human beings in a place that is X times 234 a restaurant, or it's the same in terms of density. So it does matter in terms of lots of things, and I heard everything you said about the septic and the parking, but when there is a significant change in the number of human beings that could be in a place at any one time, it just is worth understanding what that means, and I don't know, I don't know what that means, event room.
It's limited.
It's approved, it's limited for 45 people.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, with the Health Department.
Fine, so that's, so you can call it whatever you want.
Right.
But it's a 45-person gathering space, and that's it?
Yeah.
It's all determined by square footage or something.
Exactly.
Right.
And again, if it's being processed as an amended site plan, those additions will go on a plan before it's presented for action by the Board.
So then, I'm sorry, then I'm a little confused then, if, I don't see the word "event room" defined in the back.
No, we're going to ask them to add text on the site plan to define those things. The purpose of the event room, the occupancy of the event room, how it will be occupied, so that when you do sign off, if you do, if you take a positive action, that you know what you're approving.
What I'm saying is that if a restaurant is capped at 45 people, and instead of there being a bunch of round tables that have eight people on it, instead there are little tables that can only hold two people, but then they're standing tables, but you can have an event there, what's the difference? If it's capped by the 45 people to begin with?
That are in the room upstairs. So there's a limit on the number of people that can be in the room upstairs.
Understood.
And that's 45.
Right.
And that would probably be, have you been in, you've been in these rooms?
Not upstairs, no. Downstairs.
No, not in this building, but just in general. Restaurants often have, you know, a party space.
Yes.
So that people can have a private...
Yes.
Meal. So you're wanting a piece of language in our code that defines event room?
Well, because we're making a distinction between the current restaurant, this is an addition to the restaurant, or this is...
This is a private space.
It's a private space.
So you could presumably rent the whole restaurant, or just the private space? Depending on what somebody wanted, like if somebody had 100 people, and you were allowed to have 45, you know, 55 people downstairs and 45 people upstairs, that would be your count?
I wouldn't get too hung up on the...
No, 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 I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to illustrate.
I think it's just additional seating is what it is, and I'm sure you could rent out the restaurant if you, you know, had enough money and decided that's what you're going to do. This is space that they're not normally going to seat people at, somebody would come and reserve it for all their party, you know, you have 45 in your party as opposed to three or eight, or whatever it is.
Are you asking if it could be overflow space for the restaurant, if the restaurant were incredibly full, and...
I understand it better than I, but it's just another part of the restaurant, right? It's just making it slightly bigger restaurant.
It's not going to be for normal dining, everyday dining.
It's not a catering hall either.
It's like a caterer hall.
Is it like a catering hall?
No.
No, it's a small room.
Okay.
Somebody wants to have a small party.
Yeah, so additional seating is what it is.
Right.
Graduation dinner or something, or, okay. And the table plans all have to go, have to be approved by the fire, don't they? Or is it... The seating, really. You have to file some sort of seating chart, don't you, or no? We actually have a plan. Yeah, okay, and that should, that should cover us.
I mean, the seating layout, though, you can alter it to...
I mean, digress, right.
Yeah, have it work however you want it to be, so, I mean, they have room for 45, that's what they're allowed, and they can just adjust the seating for whatever's going on.
Any further questions? Nice.
Tables, chairs.
Chairs, chairs. You know, if they want to put them all at one end, it's...
One of us retired.
John, we understand, it's just that, when I first saw this term, "event room," I kind of...
I don't know what you're talking about.
We'll forgive them. We'll have to get our code revision there.
Additional seating sounds better.
All right, let's move on. We're going to declare ourselves lead agency?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, we need a motion to send it to County Planning.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need anything else at the moment?
And, well, lastly, just to follow the terms of the code, you want to formally declare it as a minor project.
Okay. Motion to that effect?
I'll make my motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other proof that you want them to submit for next month's meeting? You just want them to interface with Ron, or...
Yeah.
We've identified a variety of things that I'd like to see in the, in my technical memorandum, I'll make sure that those, that information neither gets evidenced on plan or otherwise gets provided through your records.
You know, Ron is thorough and immeasurable, report, he's got everything down here we want to know.
Do we have to do the whole thing about waiving?
We'll have that in the...
Well, yeah, you should have a waiver of the public hearing, I think it's appropriate.
Oh, that, okay.
Should we do that now?
Yeah, just a motion to waive the public hearing.
Okay. Take that, take the motion for waiving the public hearing?
Does anybody move?
Second?
Seconds.
Thank you, Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I just don't want to go on the one hundred and move. I just don't want to go on the one hundred.
Well, I got to ring a bell, then, I think. New business. Jared and Carolina Delavalle proposed single-star residential structure with garage, pool, and pool area located at 117 Round Hill Road Garrison. Glenn.
Oh, I'm so sorry. What's the prescription?
Actually, I didn't miss a reading. Thanks.
It's all speak to the town board. I hope he's gone. How's yours? Right at the bottom there.
An application from Jared and Caroline Delavalle, who bought property from Chris Fadden. This is a -- this lot is up in the -- behind the Cybercon, former Cybercon building. It's going to be the Magazzini Building. It's all the way up at the top of the hill. It's all the way up at the top of the private road. It was one of the two lots north -- south of Chris Fadden's house. There is a fill pair that was prepared by Mr. Fadden in anticipation of sale of the house. There was a septic plan approved by the health department. And there was a clearing and a road built into the property. So Mr. Delavalle and his firm, he's an architect, have designed a house that would take advantage of the slope by giving him basically a walkout situation where his living area was on the bottom floor. Walk -- and walkout, he would enter from the top. Be able to walk out to a pool, walk out to a small lawn area, and this open area is basically, by and large, cleared already. House is a little over 3,000 square feet. We're in the Ridgeline Protection District, and we are proposing some grading on 20% to take advantage of the slope, to take advantage of this disturbance that's already occurred on site. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Did he send the model with you?
Did he send the model?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, the model's really great.
Hi, Neil.
So it's built into the hillside. So it's pretty -- it's in a flat roof, and it's a walkout glass. So it doesn't really show you...
And Round Hill comes off 301, Glenn?
No, it comes off Route 9.
Oh, Route 9.
This is Vineyard Lane, goes behind.
Oh, right, right.
And then all the way up the top, we're near Chris Fadden's house. Just south of it.
No, that's not the one. There's one that's starting to be cut in. Is that the one on 9?
No, it's a -- you know, the drive up to Chris's house.
All right, I'll get it.
Same hill.
Yeah, same hill. I know the hill.
Cold Spring Farm.
Okay.
It's immediately north of that.
Okay, right.
The one they put in without Horse Farm?
Yeah, it's the first -- it's the immediate road north, Real Road.
Yeah.
Before Cybercon. What'd you say it's going to be called?
Pardon me?
Magazine with an I on the end of it, pronounced in Italian. I'll tell you when I come back. Maybe I could tell you better.
Okay.
Are we allowed to...
Magazzini?
Yeah. Magazine in the sense of a warehouse, which means warehouse. Yeah.
Magazine, that's good.
Ron, any comments on this?
Again, Glenn's described the basics of the proposal. Since it's an exit -- it's a residential structure, but in excess of 3,000 square feet, so it, per the use table, it requires site plan review. It should be deemed a minor project by this board. You can so classify it tonight. And as Glenn indicates, it's in areas of the Ridgeline Hillside Protection District, so you should consider tonight whether you want to conduct a site visit. Just to understand the specifics of the disturbance that will result, because it's in that hillside protection area, you want to understand if the disturbances are visible from other public places, things of that sort, which I think you'll best understand from a site So that's the basics of what's in my technical review.
Okay. Any questions? Any further questions from anybody? Let's do the site and see if we can get a site visit. You got a calendar handy. Declare it a minor site plan. Motion to that extent.
Can I just ask this question?
Yeah, sure.
You know, on the front of this site plan application project, it's got a major project. So is this -- does this make any difference?
It's not a major project.
Right, but it's -- is there -- I guess what I'm asking is, is this whole big, major project form that's been filled out, the right form? If it's a minor -- is it all the same form?
Yes.
These many, many...
It's the same form, and if it's -- I don't think there's two forms.
Right. And is it -- is tonight a time that to -- I read through this form, and there were some things, errors in it.
You clearly want to identify any concerns you have, or any incomplete data that might exist in this application.
Okay, you know, one of the things that was -- and I don't know where this is, but it said that the zoning was 10 acres in here? And I -- all I see on this plot is like a six-point something.
It's a pre-existing, legally pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
All right, and then...
But the zoning is still 10 acres.
Okay, all right. So that makes sense. And then I saw on page 11 that, you know, they asked to know the proportion of the site that is composed of bedrock outcroppings, and there's no number in there. And then on F, it says approximate proportion of proposed action site with slopes, 0 to 10, 10 to 15, 15 or greater. And it only had -- it says 100% of the site is 0 to 10.
Well, that's clearly a mistake.
So anyway, I'm just pointing it out.
Nope, you're right.
My technical memorandum asked for that detail, to break it down into the right proper slope categories.
Oh, I didn't notice it in your -- yeah, but good work.
That's okay. That'll get corrected. It also winds up being shown on the site plan drawings.
Right.
That information, you'll see. You won't have to hunt for it.
Sounds good. So that's all.
Nope, it's fine. Yep, it was a mistake. Okay. Anyone else?
Now, one other thing that should be noted is that since there's disturbance planned within 20%, the board is also required to grant a special permit. That's just a procedural issue, just so you understand it. And that'll get factored into your review and any conditions of approval when you get there down the road.
I asked for a motion on declaring it minor.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to -- we definitely need to do a site visit. We got a calendar handy. You're reading my eyes. No, I had an eye exam today.
It's usually Sunday morning.
Sunday morning, yeah. And we need to advertise it.
So we do it on 25th or the 2nd?
Yes, October 9th.
October 9th?
October 9th.
Okay, anybody have any problem with that?
What was the date?
Is it -- that's Columbus Day weekend?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're not a guy.
That's right. No, but my -- my son is getting married in November. We're having some get-together over that weekend, just the guys.
What's the next weekend? 16th? 16th?
The 16th, yeah.
And when's the meeting? Meeting's the 20th. So the 16th?
I can't come, but that's okay, because I've seen the model.
Anybody have a problem with the 16th?
I can't.
Okay. Yeah, Sunday the 16th? All right, Glenn?
Yep, that'd be fine. Thank you.
It's been what, 9:00?
9:30.
9:30, yeah. Okay.
Could we schedule a public hearing for next month?
You think we'll have a hearing we need by then?
Hey, would you -- oh, there is no referrals, right? Okay.
Conservation Board should...
Yeah, you shouldn't send it to Conservation just for their information to see if they wish to comment, only because of the disturbance, these steep slopes.
Fire company.
You could. The driveway itself is not significant, right? But we can make that referral if you wish. I mean, Round Hill is a private road, but that's existed for an eternity.
Well, okay, it just as information, then.
Yeah, all right, we can file.
Yeah.
What's required in others for the butters list?
The butters list?
Oh, that automatically gets...
Yeah, that's part of it.
Sent. You send that, don't you?
No, we don't send it.
You don't send the butters, we send it.
500 feet.
Do you think we can do that, Ron? Public hearing?
Yep. We'll get the referrals right out.
Okay. Motion to set a public hearing for next month?
Hold on.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And the thing is, if it gets to the point where we're not complete, we don't feel we're complete, we can -- we advertise a public hearing, and we're not -- we feel at that point we're not complete, can we...
You'll open it and just continue the hearing.
Continue, okay. All right. Anything else we need?
Secret.
Oh, secret review.
It's an enlisted action, just to declare yourselves lead agency.
And take a vote on it? All in favor on the public hearing first?
Aye.
Okay, and secret review?
I think you're going to wait to physically make a declaration until you see the site.
No, it's an enlisted action. There's absolutely no reason you can't declare that right now. And you're the only involved agency, so you're lead agency.
There's no question of lead agency. I'm just saying, not to make a negative...
Oh, I'm not saying make a negative declaration.
Okay, there you go. There you go. Declaring themselves lead is appropriate.
No, that's what I want, yeah.
Always have enough to conservation.
Yeah. And fire company, just for information. Okay, what have I missed here now? We got last site plan. Anything else?
You're going to do the secret, or did I miss that?
Approves -- do the secret review approval?
No.
Declare ourselves lead agency.
And then it's an enlisted action, that's all.
Okay. Motion to that effect?
Full.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get through this.
We're moving so fast, you know, that it's...
Should go to eye doctor before I come here.
I keep hearing the chairman's phone. I can't.
I know, I can't. I'm still recovering.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
I have one question on one other submission that Ron gave us on the Grasso site plan. Anything on that, Ron?
Again, there was a pre-application conference with Andre Grasso. Had a commercial project down at Garrison on Route 9. And it's an existing -- an existing commercial site, and he's proposing to construct a warehouse to the rear of the existing building. I've tried to summarize the, technically, what the project entails, and then how it apply -- how your code applies to the review, and also identify for him the fees he would have to pay upon processing an application with you. So that's really just for your record until such time as he actually comes forward with an application.
Okay.
There'll be a similar technical review coming out for Olspan, because Olspan, again, the former Cybercon, they're proposing some modifications to the site entrance and a few other things, not specifically to the building, but there's site enhancements they want to prosecute, and so they want to make you aware of it. And again, we had a pre-application conference the same day as Grasso. Those minutes are just being finalized, and I'll get them out to you. And at some point, that'll become an application before this board.
Okay. I did have a note here. I wanted to ask you and Steve's advice about -- we've talked about this just about every month now for almost two years. GEX and any other similar situation, or an application lies dormant for X amount of time. Is there a resolution or something that the planning board can adopt, or should we come up with something to ask the town board to codify it? That there's a time limit on these things, or a number of times it can come before the board, asking for extensions and so forth?
Well, if you have an active application like GEX, I mean, your options are clear. We've been over this. You're free to deny the extension. You're free to say, "We want to have a public hearing before we grant the extension," or you can grant the extension. So there's really no need to change the code or go to the town board on it. You have all the options before you. If you have an application that has laid dormant for quite a while, and I think we've fleshed out most of them, Linda fished out here, was it two months ago? I forget exactly. An old resolution that was adopted, I think, was it by the town board? I'm not sure. It was the town board or this board?
Very cool.
Regarding the procedure for dismissal of claims that have had no activity for over a year. And maybe you want to just send that out by email. Again, everybody can take a look at it and, you know, reacquaint themselves with it. And I think, Linda, you even looked and saw if there were any. I don't want to put this on you, but did you check the files of the planning board to see if there are any outstanding ones, or you just sought for those two that were...
I forgot I have my key.
I forgot, too.
I'm sure I can find, yeah, I'm certain I can find your materials you sent out some months ago. I think it was actually -- it might have been done in concert with Kevin Donahue, the building inspector. Was pursuing one project specifically and identified a few others that had lied dormant, and that prompted the research to identify this policy that the board was following.
I mean, the underlying problem is, I don't think there's a master list anywhere of all the applications that have been submitted to the planning board. So is it possible that there's one out there that was submitted four years ago, and they just haven't done anything, and the board is in a position to say, oh, yes, that one's outstanding? That, that could well be the case. I don't think there's a master list of applications for the planning board anywhere.
Then it's making some really good graphs to track where things are supposed to be. And, I don't know, I, that's a project that I'd like to undertake at some point, maybe in the deep dead of winter, when it's really fun to go through the files. Maybe I'll come in and help you, because that would be really great.
If you can't do anything going back, you can at least know going forward where you stand. That's half the game there.
You can go through all the agendas, you know, and you'll see, because they're all online, so, yeah.
They only go back so far, though, too.
No, they go back to at least 2009, because that's when I updated that website.
Well, okay, I was thinking farther back than, okay.
Yeah.
They probably assume that the ones before that are done.
Maybe.
Or...
I don't know. We just returned a bond from the 80s.
Yeah. That's what got me thinking about it. Several months ago, we returned two bonds, and one was 10 years old and the other was about 15. Now, I'm assuming that the projects or whatever had been completed or terminated, and they just never got their money, but finally, they did get their money, but...
They must not have wanted it.
Well, I don't think there are any big sums to worry about. Okay, is there anything else to discuss? Yeah, Mary Ellen?
The one time we did discuss it a few months back was when we also decided that perhaps we could incentivize it by applying the fee for the renewal of that every time. There was a fee for that. And we were going to check into it or confirm that that fee was being charged.
And the issue with that fee, the only thing I would say is that if the county planning is holding people up, they don't have any leverage over the county planning, so to charge them a fee because the county can't give them the paperwork is...
Well, this thing with GEX is something extraordinary. I've never seen county, I have no idea what happened in there. I mean, it's just been going on...
For a long time, it wasn't in, in an agency's hands, it was illness and whatever inaction on the applicant side, right?
Glenn?
We probably have about 25 years of minutes, and I, you're welcome to come in and take a look at and note if you ever do get to that. But I guess my last request of the evening is if you would consider scheduling that workshop just before your meeting, so we'd give Ron a little bit of time to finalize that thing. I sure would like to see that on the agenda next one.
Well, I'm sure Ron's going to shoot for it, and we'll, you know, we'll kind of have to play that by ear, I mean.
Yeah, there's, there's other parties involved, so it'll take some interplay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've made it clear to KRF that the goal is to make this middle in advance of your next, your October meeting.
Yeah, we'd like to get it going next month.
I'll be looking for her tomorrow.
Okay. Well, you know, we'll do what we can with that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.